Go ahead and call the meeting to order. December 26 regular meeting, Barstown City Council. I don't see any individuals or groups who want to address the council, so Jeff, since you already had the floor, will move on into the agreement with the SEPA agreement allocations.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Those of you who were here last year may have remembered, this is just a routine renewal of our arrangement by which OMU manages our SEPA allocations of the Southeastern Power Administration's power allocations for the municipal membership group that you see listed in the front end of the agreement, all of the KU municipals, if you will, that have access to the Cumberland River Hydro Power. Of course, we purchased that, and then OMU manages how that is then dispatched and sold on the market. And for the most part, that's a net benefit to the group, of which we get our percentage allocation share of that benefit. So it's just a formality that the council authorizes the mayor to name Brown Thornton, our consultant, as the signing party to the SEPA arrangement. And then all he needs is that confirmed, a copy of the minutes, and Brown's been signing for us for a number of years, so he just takes a formal vote of the council. If they have any questions, I'll answer.
I guess I would ask for a motion.
Mayor, if I'm in order, I'd like to make a motion to move to authorize the mayor to execute the contract renewal agreement from the Southeastern Power Administration, or SEPA, and to authorize Brown Thornton to sign the agreement on behalf of the City of Barstown.
Okay, I have a motion, not a second?
Second.
Second, but Councilman Williams, any other discussion? All in favor, say if I'm saying aye. All opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Jessica's out today, so the next item on our agenda is for the multi-use path. We had a request for proposal, and our street chairman Buckman and Jessica and who else was there? Ben, I guess, Finberg Public Works, reviewed the proposals, and you saw your packet, they've scored the proposals. QK4 is the firm that we've planned to hire to be the engineering and the manager of the project. This is a multi-use path from 62 over to 30, actually Chambers Boulevard, I guess. We've had a good working relationship with QK4. One of the most recent ones was our streetscape downtown. They administered that $3 million project, and the project manager for this one will be Rob Martin, who also oversaw the streetscape renovation we did downtown, was retired from the State Highway Department, now engineer with QK4, so a Barstown resident knows the project very well. So I would ask, I guess, for a motion then to approve the hiring of QK4 to be the firm that will oversee it, be the engineer on this multi-use project. So a motion by Councilman Buckman, a second?
Second.
Second, and Councilman Copeland, any other discussion? If you recall, most of this project has been funded by federal grant, so with some a max, I think about $130,000 by us, which was budgeted already and things.
Both those companies, they put together a big panel like this guy. It's a lot of work involved here. And that's the criteria that you go by. I mean, it actually has the evaluation factors in it, how you evaluate these people. And however you rate them, that's the person, that's the group that gets the job.
That scope of the proposal was pretty extensive.
Yeah, it is.
QK4 was very involved with the bridge project in Louisville as well.
Actually, there's a couple of people from Barstown that actually affiliated, that Crow, is that his name? Jan Johnston's husband, he is to be the surveyor for this company. Then Rob Martin would be the project manager, which is nice for, you know, local economy.
A motion, a second, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, and all in favor, say if I'm saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Okay, everyone have a chance to review the minutes, unless there's any corrections or additions, I approve everybody unanimous consent.
Let's don't forget the PZ and HRB and DRB that was up above there.
Yeah, and we got some HRB, we got two HRBs first, and then we have the Development Review Board, separate from that, so we'll take what we like to do.
Yeah, we'll do the HRB COAs first. COA 1797, Amy Harmon, Sandra O'Mayer, request to install signage at 100 West Flagee Avenue. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed signage. COA 17-98, Sandra Porter, Federal Hill Capital Management LLC, request to install signage at 129 North Third Street. Recommendation, approved, approval to install this proposed sign. And we'll do the DRB separate.
Mayor, if I'm in order, I'll make a recommendation, we approve the HRB's recommendation for COA-17-97 and COA-17-98.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Scheckel, a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Kelly, is there any discussion? All in favor, say if I'm saying aye. All opposed, HRB recommendations are approved, COAs. Now we've got a Development Review Board number 251.
And typically, we all just make a motion to approve the action of the DRB. I think in this particular case, there was a motion, their minutes indicate, if I can get to it, that there was a motion. The motion was made to approve the building design, materials and colors, lighting plan, and revised site plan and landscape plan, with the condition that the additional 11 canopy trees planted at a minimum of four foot tall at planting must be planted on-site. And that motion was passed, and so what is their recommendation to you all?
I would just add that this is, of course, the new five-star out of Flamengo and Louisville Road. Prior to that, they were required to get a traffic study done because we knew that there's going to be a huge amount of traffic, particularly traffic coming off Flamengo, turning left, it's going to be, you know, a big thing. So they, and part of this is that Midland will have to widen Flamengo, so there will be a turn lane, two turn lanes coming out of Flamengo, one for the right and one to the left, which is an improvement. There'll be one entrance, right entrance, in only off of Louisville Road, then obviously then down this lane, there'll be an access there, and also off Flamengo. And the State Highway Department was very involved in reviewing all that, with making sure that there's not going to be stacking issue or unsafe conditions getting in and out there, because we've got a lot of large truck traffic coming in there, besides just the homeowners who live back there already. There'll be a much increase in traffic, so. And I had made a request to the state to consider a traffic signal immediately, but they drag their feet on those things sometimes, but they didn't, they said no for now, but they said they wouldn't review it in time. But I feel certain that they very well could need a signal before it's over with, really be safe for traffic to slow some of that traffic down, that more people in there.
They'll wait till they have a major accident.
Have they looked at accident data? I mean, there's been some, already some major accidents.
Well, they have a grading scale, it's kind of almost like a report card. They say right now, it's a C, and they think once the property looks developed and open, that it will, the intersection will now go to a D or something to that effect, which at that point, it may be enough to justify a traffic signal there. But they did not do it immediately. It's sort of like they're going to do this to see how bad it's going to get before they go that route. We're going to stay on top of that, because it's going to be a major change to that area. I guess then we need a motion then to approve the recommendation from the Development Review Board, 251, which was approval of the overall plan. It does meet the, Jessica Filatron sat in on a number of meetings there with them on this, as we have discussed. Some vote, Mayor, motion to approve DRB 251, a second? Second, Councilman Buckman, any other discussion? All in favor, say if I'm saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Tracy's out, he'll, several people out here right now. Greg, I'll let you go ahead and, well, we need someone to introduce the ordinance first. Someone to introduce the.
Mayor, if I'm in order, I'd like to introduce Ordinance B 2017-18, Classification and Compensation Plan, and ask that a summary be read.
And actually, it's going to be, since it's going to be enacted in 2018, we're going to call it B 2018-XX, because it'll probably be 01, but we'll determine that in passing when it's passed. Summary of Ordinance B 2018. An ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance style and ordinance creating classification and plan and compensation plan. This ordinance amends Ordinance B 2016-10, B 2016-15, B 2017-11, B 2017-14, and Chapter 35 Employment Policies, the Classification Compensation Plan and Municipal Code by amending the number of authorized positions, their title and pay grade, and setting the ranges for pay grades for city employees for fiscal year 2017-18 and subsequent years. The amendments in additions reflecting the number of positions, title, and pay grade respectively are: Engineering Department, add one administrative engineer, part-time, 121. This ordinance or parts of ordinance is in conflict herewith or repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as in summary as required by law. This summary was certified by me, Tim Butler, City Attorney.
Thank you, Tim. As we're all aware, you know, Larry Hamilton retired back in June, I think, and then, of course, we were budgeted for him to work through this fiscal year, and initially indicated he was going to work full-time through the end of 2018, but then after his wife retired, he decided to retire. I think the pension issue influenced him some there as well, but now he has indicated that he would have an interest in working part-time for us. And after discussing this with Jeff and Greg and Jessica and a number of the staff, we have a great deal of amount of work that Larry was already working on, some projects that he was already working on, that have really just been kind of sitting there because the fact that Jessica and Eric and them are pretty well covered up as it is. And we think that adding this position, allowing Larry to work 20 hours a week would be the maximum as a part-time position, and then bringing his, you know, wealth of knowledge that he brings as being the supervisor of the public works as well as engineering would be a real asset, particularly right now with as many projects as we've got going. We've got a major water project at Jazzmouth, we've got the Rowland Creek Truck Improvement for the sewer project, and a number of, we've got some rate studies that need to be done, and I'm going to go ahead and out you, Jeff. Jeff has indicated that he's going to be retiring, Jeff Mills, our electrical engineer's going to be retiring February 1st. So, thank you, Governor, but. We've had a lot of institutional knowledge has changed in this past year, and with Larry now has reconsidered his position, even like a part-time position, and definitely doesn't affect us budget-wise, but with Jeff leaving and these other projects on the books and on the works, I think it would be great that we could have someone of Larry's background and knowledge, having overseen, you know, electric cable, internet, public works. He'd be a great resource for some of these right-of-ways we've got to obtain, easements we've got to obtain, and then just with some of the day-to-day decisions that have to be made with all those departments. He'd be a great asset on that, so Jeff thought it was a good idea.
He's mentored me all these years, and I continue to learn new things from him every time I'm around him.
So that's sort of the background of why we've, instead of having, we no longer have a Director of Public Works in Engineering, but now we're going to have an administrative position on a part-time basis, so that's why we made this proposal this evening. And I would ask, I guess, for a motion first to approve this amendment.
It's first read, so we don't need to, unless you want to, you can have a vote on it, but it's not necessary.
We'll do the second reading next month, but I would be welcome if anybody had any questions on this proposal, or had a, you know, certainly within our budget, then I think it would be important for us in the near future to have someone with Larry's background to help us with these projects. Greg, did you want to discuss anything about some of the other things you sent to us about, you know, we are, we're coming a much younger.
We're a lot younger. I've sent all of you an email, but I mean, six of our eight department heads have been with the city for seven years or less. And the other one, two, you know, Jeff's leaving February 1st, so if you replace that position, if you replace that position, it would be seven of the eight positions with the city have been with, you know, been with the city for seven years or less. 52% of our employees have been here for five years or less, 69% of our employees have been here for 10 years or less. And we're very, very young, you know, we have a very, very young workforce and a very, very young leadership. And I sent those numbers to the mayor, you know, as a, showing why we would need a Larry Hamilton-type person with that institutional knowledge to help us whenever we can. I use him all the time. He was also the city administrator many, many years ago, so I use him as a resource all the times. I know Jeff does as well. And it would be, it would be great to have him here in a part-time position to bridge that institutional gap between the young leadership now and somebody from, that knows it.
Thank you, Greg. Any other discussion on this? All right, thank you. We're going down to reports, staff, and committees. Jeff, you want to kind of give us an update on where we're at with the retransmission agreements?
Right. When we met last, we reported that we'd pretty much come to terms, or we're comfortable with two of the four Louisville Station retransmission consent arrangements. We're still working on the other two. They've made some movement, the last of which came in just this evening, so the mayor's yet to look at those in detail, but it is the last meeting of the year for you guys in terms of the authorization to sign. We don't really have anything to present tonight on the other two that would be subject to formal approval. Barring that, I guess we're looking at getting extensions from them till we could formally meet again. There's no reason to call a special meeting necessarily, but it's, I wouldn't go as far as to say it's too close to call, but there's one that I'm optimistic about, and there's one that I'm not optimistic about. The stations that we've come to terms with are WAVE and WDRB, and the two that we haven't come to terms with are WLKY and WHAS. NBC has the Super Bowl this year, WAVE, so I'm pretty comfortable we'll get an extension from WLKY if we need it. We've made sufficient progress with them and continue to talk on a pretty regular basis. The folks from WHAS, they move incrementally. I mean, the dollar figures we're looking at, and every time you talk to them, they come down 1%. And we move a lot more than that from the starting position that we had offered, say, even Councilman Kelly had reacted to our initial starting point of 25%, then 10%, and 10% in subsequent years as a significant increase. And that's true, that is significant. What's driving these folks is they feel like they are worth that in the market, and as where we are in the ecosystem as distributors, if you think of the content owners being like the NFL or the movie producers and all that, then they negotiate with the networks for what they think that's worth, and that trickles down to the owners of these stations. That's, you know, when CBS basically doubles what they're going to charge for their content, the owner of, say, WLKY in this case, Hearst in New York, has to react to that and the impact to their bottom line. Where does that get shoved? That gets shoved downstream to the affiliate, who says, okay, now we're going to be paying double for the stuff that we broadcast from CBS, and we're kind of the last, second to the last person in the food chain, the distributor, with the ATM wallet of our customers being the last person in the food chain. We've made all the appeals that we can, all the reasoned arguments about how this may break the model. I don't know how much more we could point out to them that, yeah, it doesn't impact our operation financially, what do you want us to charge? And we think you're charging a little bit too much, when somebody can go out and, it drives people to seek alternatives. And people are seeking alternatives every day. So the mayor's done a great job in sticking to his gun. Now I know why it's hard to buy a car, but that's, it's interesting to see us be in that consumer position with these folks. And so hopefully we'll get extensions to be able to bridge the year to the next formal council meeting, that we can bring all of the networks to complete. So barring that, if they won't extend, we will lose our authorization midnight this Sunday, New Year's Eve. And by law, we won't be able to retransmit those signals. So we're preparing a slate, and what it takes to remote access into the receivers and to swap the content, I guess right after the ball drops, to a slate that says, here's what just happened. We hope to avoid that, because at this point, with no formal proposals from those remaining two channels, it's going to take an extension, and we'll let them know that tomorrow.
Okay. I was just wondering about the extension. How would we know?
They've got till 5 o'clock. Close of business Friday to get that to us. I guess we can monitor an email all the way up to midnight. I'm assuming the mayor would be okay if I send him a text that said they're giving us an extension, an email authorization for us is fine. Does that suit you guys? And I would recommend that we take that, all the way up to the 11th hour, literally. It's happened before.
I'm hoping to be on, talking to the station manager directly tomorrow. Sometimes we're talking to some different people, but I'm hoping tomorrow I'll be on the station manager with WLKY. I don't know about WHAS.
The owner's representative has invited us to get on a call with her tomorrow as well.
I would echo what Jeff said, and we're kind of optimistic about one, not so optimistic about the other, but I think they're at least moving some, so I think that means we're all negotiating in good faith, so I don't know why they wouldn't grant us an extension if we can't get to terms yet, December 31st, but they are trying to move, and we're just having to move a lot further than, faster than they are.
If they can't negotiate, and we have to settle for their rates, what's that do to the customers, Bill? What will that do to the customers?
It's very costly.
Yeah, but is it like, I mean, give me a dollar figure?
Five dollars.
Five dollars a month?
Right, for basic. And of course, expanded goes up every year, and there's a lot more channels in that lineup. And you'll see in the flyer, we have a flyer compared, that's hard to write, you're writing it for the future, trying to predict what may happen with the print deadline of December 19th. That's already in the hopper, but it's coming out, and those rate increases on the back page of the flyer for everything but basic are fairly clear to us. And then the best that we had at the moment was, I think, $5.16 in aggregate impact basic, so that the classic cable tier that most everyone subscribes to is going up $8 in February, February 1.
Jeff is just curious, going forward with future negotiations, and it's probably a little late, obviously, to think about changing any now, but is there a possibility, just as in the SEPA situation that we just agreed to, is there some type of a regional association that can be developed amongst distributors such as us that could give us a little bit more bargaining power when it comes dealing with these affiliates?
Most of our situations on a regional basis are unique to each one of us. For instance, Frankfurt has access to, due to the must-carry laws and the significantly viewed rules of the FCC, their position between Louisville and, even though they're in the Lexington DMA, dominant market area, even though they're in the Lexington market, they have access to Louisville stations where we don't.
That's what I'm thinking, is a viewership kind of association.
Right. Williamstown is another example there, in the Cincinnati market, but they have access to both Louisville and Lexington. It's my understanding that Williamstown, both Williamstown and Frankfurt no longer, or have formally, or whether that takes shape however in the following week, they're no longer going to carry WHAS, for instance. It's just that the prices have gotten such to what used to be, you know, convenience, because if you live in Frankfurt, you want to see your weather from the west. Now, whether the network says you can't do an out-of-market deal, like in WDRB's case, Frankfurt can't even get WDRB, because Fox says no. That's, you're undermining the in-market negotiating power of the Fox affiliate in Lexington. So there's a number of those types of constraints, even on a regional basis. But more to your point, the NCTC, the National Cooperative, Cable Television Cooperative that we're a member of, has kind of taken this up and did negotiate with the one owner, the most honorary, one of the most honorary owners of television stations in the country, Sinclair, and got as good a deal as the $2 million membership could provide, and it's still not as good as some of the things that we're working on here. And that's, that's kind of depends on who the owner is, how much market power they have, or what affiliates are in your region. And Sinclair might own, and NBC, and Cincinnati, but in Knoxville, they own the CBS, you know, so there's a, that's just a really... So there's a, that's just a really hard to pin down, some form of solidarity, if you will, amongst such diversity.
Because of the overlap and diversity.
Yeah. Our only position here, and our only negotiating strength with these broadcasters, is to either negotiate the best deal that we can with them. If we can't come to terms, we don't care anymore. That's our only option.
So can we lose ABC?
We could.
Do you have any on ABC?
If, yeah. It's dark. It's a dark channel. We're going to put a slate up that says, we're so sorry that we couldn't get this worked out. Here's the number to call. We're still working on that message.
But then our customers leave us like the plague, right?
Well, we're going to do everything we can within practicality to get, nothing worse than an extension, but continue to negotiate because the two sides are getting closer, but we're not there at this point. And we've had that happen before. Bill Scheckel's been through it. I did it once before.
We've not dropped a network yet. We came really close last year, or last term, last cycle, we call it, with WHAS. They gave us a 15-day extension, let the mayor change happen, and they moved a little bit more. It's ironic, though, that there is a distinct ranking of the networks in Louisville in terms of their popularity. Nielsen's got that. They all know each other's data up there. And WHAS is the fourth in a lot of the routine rankings in the Louisville market. And yet, here they command, you know, dollars amongst the highest. Is that fair? Is that prudent? We come down, the last decision was made over a nickel. But their positioning was out of whack with their popularity or ratings. So that's some of the, part of the decision-making that we're still grappling with.
I think one of the unknowns is, Joe, to your point, is who leaves us due to high prices versus losing one channel is what it comes down to.
I know the satellite providers occasionally, you know, you'll see that they're a little dark on these channels, on the local channels. And they'll urge you, and part of their message would be to urge them to contact the TV station.
Or go to the competing provider. And that's, you'll see that wording in the flyer, that no provider's immune to this. But it was WLKY on Dish last spring, right? They didn't, Dish did not have WLKY, and they all were March Madness. The good news is, a lot of that's available streaming. And it's certainly available for free if you have an antenna. The antennas still work. A lot of people think, oh, since the digital transition, I can't even put on the antenna and get anything. That's, that is simply not true. We've got good signal here in most of our community, especially the more north and west you live. My brother's on an antenna in New Haven. And so they're pricing themselves out of the market, in my opinion. Hopefully we'll have something better to report via email later this week in terms of extending to where we can take a formal vote on the other two. And I don't know, do we need formal action on the two that we have?
Well, I've been looking and looking and looking, and I can't find anything that requires the council to, you know, the mayor, as Councilman Kelly said last time, mayor's authorized to enter into contracts on behalf of the city. This is a content neutral, I mean, a dollar neutral. It's not really allocating city funds. But I think as a matter, from what I can determine, as a matter of past policy, it's come to the council as a whole. So the council as a whole is involved because it does impact constituents very much directly. And you all will be the ones getting the calls, I'm sure. That all having been said, I think that you could, you can always authorize the mayor by vote to enter, obviously, he's got the authority to negotiate, he's doing that now, but to enter into a contract with any and all of these providers at his discretion. So I think you could do it either way. It's up to you all.
That's all we've got.
I would just say, tell you all, we're very fortunate, we have someone with Jeff Mills' experience and background in this. He's been down this road many, many times with his help. He's been a tremendous amount of help. And we sit, we have daily meetings on this and back and forth. He's got such a lot of historical data, how they've negotiated in the past and so forth. So it's been very helpful with the work that Jeff's done on this as we try to get to something that we can live with. Well, thank you, Jeff, for all that.
Thank you all. Hate to see it happen, but...
We sometimes have discussions after 6:00 and 7:00 o'clock at night when he gets late correspondence back and forth, and he'll still let me know about it. Appreciate that. I would just say you have to counsel if you think you need to formally authorize me to enter into agreement with these groups. I don't know that it's...
I think that would be, I think that would just show by vote a shift in how you all want to deal with it. But again, I think that at any point in time, if you all want to take it up, you can take it up. If you want to delegate it to the mayor, delegate it to the mayor.
Yeah, we're going to continue to keep you all in the loop as we can.
I'd give it a layaway, whatever is needed.
They'll come around, they'll be slow.
One, we'll probably be talking to them Saturday, even possibly.
I'll leave a tree stand. I have my phone with me.
Jeff, you indicated that WHAS was number four in the Louisville market? Who's one, two, and three?
I'm going to make them mad if I start picking them like that, but I'm not afraid to say WHAS is number four.
We'll continue to work on this and hopefully bring it to an acceptable conclusion.
Can I ask you a question? This is a lighter note. The DVRs that we have for the cable system, have we did any updates with the way everything looks on the TV?
Yeah, there's a new guide on the, that's a revamped guide. There's a few more features in it. It's prettier, it's more direct TV-ish, if you will. That's Rovi. Rovi's the guide provider. They bought TiVo recently. And it's just a code of grace that says, hey, we're going there, and we have to kind of go along with that.
Okay. Is there something?
We do that in bills.
Well, I received some calls, and I totally kind of forgot because it was like during Christmas, you know? But I guess people are maybe losing some of their DVR recordings. Either it's saying that the DVR is full, when they go to hit their button, it is gone. All the recordings are gone.
Just need to power cycle it one more time.
Hit it again and refresh. Okay. All right. Simple enough.
We've had a lot of success with that.
Okay.
There might be a few instances where the box doesn't recover, but we've seen a power cycle, and even a lot of it takes about four hours for that code to finish fully booting.
Okay.
But they can just give us a call.
Okay.
With the new formatting, have you received any complaints?
No, I actually got some texts from folks unsolicited that said, hey, lovely new guy. Looks great. And it's got some new DVR maintenance features on it. It takes you to HD automatically. So if you go to 26, which is not in HD for ESPN, it'll still say 26, but you're watching 626. And you can defeat that, but by default, that's a hot setup. You can go to the settings and make it, if you really want to watch, ESPN and SD, you can force the box to do that. And I think we've got a new instruction manual on our website for that.
Okay. Anything else, Jeff? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks.
Okay. I have anything on the unfinished business, on the new business. We have a tax assessment moratorium, municipal order number M2017-16.
I'll read that for you, mate. Municipal order number M2017-16, a municipal order accepting the application for a tax assessment moratorium certificate for the property located at 214 East Flagee Avenue, Barstown. Being ordered by the City Council of the City of Barstown, Kentucky, Section 1, that the application for assessment moratorium certificate for the property located at 214 East Flagee Avenue, Barstown, Kentucky, is hereby accepted and further expressing the city's intent to grant an assessment moratorium to the owner of said property upon compliance with the city's property assessment. And reassessment moratoriums is defined in KRS Chapter 99.595 at 595 at seat, Section 2, that this order shall take effect and be in full force when passed and recorded according to law.
So it's a motion then to approve this municipal order 2017-16 as presented. So a motion, Councilman Buckman, the second?
Second.
Councilman Williams, is there any other discussion? All in favor, see if I would say aye?
Aye.
If I doubt that either.
They're still thinking about it.
Did you ask for?
Yeah, the motion and the second, ask for motion to approve this moratorium, this order number 2017-16. So that...
You want a roll call vote?
I don't know if you had a chance to vote. Did you vote?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye. If we're finished with that?
What's that?
I want to make a comment, something, but it's not to do with this, but it's to do with the tax moratorium and not this particular one. So if we're finished right there.
Well, we've already had a vote on this one.
Can I just make a comment about the moratorium? Not the particular one, but I actually went to the school board. I didn't realize this, but this tax moratorium does not include a moratorium on your city school taxes. Many times I've done this, I did not realize this until I got involved, this bigger project over here. So I went to the board and tried to get them to buy into this. And they liked the idea, they studied it, and then they found out that by some Kentucky law, they cannot participate and stuff like that. But in some of these larger jobs, it's a lot of money. I wish they would, you know, because that's one of the few taxing incentives we have anymore, one of the incentives to redo some of these old properties, but they can't participate by law. It's kind of sad, but...
There is stuff like that, but just like with new manufacturing that come here, you know, we have ordained, we can give them a five-year moratorium on property taxes through the city, but the counties, by statute, are forbidden to do that. So it's kind of odd how some of those laws are.
But now the county can't do the moratorium when you have to go to them separately.
Yeah, there's, yeah. They offer that now, too.
Anything else, Joe?
No, it's it.
Okay. Next item under new business, we have a development reborn appointment. This is a joint city-county appointment. And I'm going to recommend that we appoint Todd Johnson to a three-year term, beginning 1st of January. Todd previously had served under, on the Planning Commission and has indicated he'd like to get back involved with some type of committee like that. So I would recommend that we appoint Todd to a three-year term via joint appointment. The county would have to also approve this, I guess, at their next meeting. But he's very qualified and it's an important position, about 95% of all the commercial developments going on in the city. So it's important that we have a strong board, people that'll, you know, show up on a regular basis and people that can make, you know, tough decisions. Todd, I think, is that type of person, so I would recommend that.
Who's going off?
Teddy Crew would be going off.
Okay. He had one further, I guess, or...
I would just be, I'd recommend appointing Todd in his place.
In his place.
Motion then for this appointment?
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we appoint Todd Johnson to the Development Review Board for the three-year term, starting with January 1st.
Okay. The motion then, the second?
Second.
Second, by Councilman Scheckel. Any other discussion? See aye? All in favor, see if I would say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Next item, do any members of the council want to bring anything before the council this evening?
Mayor, I have something that's probably minor, and if it is, it's telling me to be quiet and I'll be finished with it. When I was looking at the minutes, it just occurred to me that from time to time, we have council members that have the same last name. And so when someone is looking at the minutes to see how someone voted, they don't know if it's, I'll just use an example, they don't know which Buckman it is without some additional research. So in light of that, should we start putting first names in the minutes? And if we don't need to, that's fine. I just thought about that.
Well, I mean, my thinking on that would be, at this point in time, the elected person is Councilman Joe Buckman, which I guess if you were going back historically and reading them as a citizen, you might not know whether it was Bill Buckman, who's now deceased, or Joe Buckman. But, I don't know, Mary, they say anything about that? Clerk?
I haven't come across it yet. It's just been a clerical tradition, it appears. But I'm happy to look it up and just make sure there's...
I was just curious about it, that's all?
I think it's more for formality's sake, but I can see your point.
I was looking at the minutes here, maybe we'll show who's present, we can just put the first thing there and then use the last thing there after, because then you can refer up. So, okay, it was Councilman Joe Buckman that was there. And that way you don't have to do it on every little...
On every vote.
Thing, then they're identified at the top. That just would be a, you know, take care of.
I like it.
Yeah, because there's other, like, Mary's name is it Mary and Greg says Greg, and I'm in there, so, you know, maybe there should be, because, you know, looking back through there, you're right, there might be some confusion about which Buckman was doing where. And if you don't know, 10 years from now, it might be an issue.
No, I, as I was reading through the, while we're on page stuff, I guess, if that's considered page stuff, it may not be. But I read through this earlier and I meant to bring it up, but I was thinking about something else. In the Historical Review Board, that is, the meeting started at 6:30 and ended at 6:30. No, I just...
Those aren't my minutes.
No, I read it earlier and I meant to, I meant to bring it up when we were talking about, but I just noticed that it started at 6:30 PM and ended at 6:30 PM. I'm alarmed.
I think Rochelle was in a hurry to get these done for the holiday.
But anyway, it's already been voted approved now, but I was, I was remembering that.
So is that what we're going on? Put the first and last name at the top with the attendees?
I don't think that works.
That work for everyone? That work for you, Captain?
Either way we do it, it's fine. I was thinking about somebody else.
Yeah, I mean, somebody's 20 years from now, they'll call back and they're just jumping through the minutes, and they don't look up who's elected when and what. You might be right.
Good discussion there. Any other council members have anything else to comment on? I would just like to, I have a couple of comments. Recent news is, you know, about the Stephen Foster drama thing, there's been a lot discussed. The only thing I would just, kind of, just update is that when we finished that meeting on Thursday, Judge Watts, myself, Senator Higdon, and Representative McCoy, you know, we felt like we had an understanding with the Parks people that we were going to leave and come back to Barstown and work, or a two-week period, to see what we could put together in terms of a solution for, short-term would be to obviously get this theater open for this season. Long-term would be more really getting into the most significant issues that they have. And we were totally caught off guard that by the time Judge Watts and I got to Barstown, that Johnny Warren had received this formal letter from legal counsel of Parks, who were not in attendance at the meeting we had been in. We had been in attendance that afternoon. So, I think those that were in attendance at that meeting were not aware that that letter was going out so soon, that that letter also included that they would have to leave their offices, which are in the, what we call the upper house, where the ticket office and the concession and all that. And so, you know, my feeling was that, you know, that area is not unsafe and it's not unreasonable to think that you can isolate the electric service that is a problem, which is down in the stage area and the dressing room area and all that. So, I had Jeff Miller go out there and confirm that. He told me over the phone, he said, oh yeah, it's not a big problem. There's a separate panel, switchgear and all that that can be turned off and there will be no electric going to the... So, I sent that to Frank on Friday morning. We had not heard anything back, but I think that hopefully is a simple solution that the drama employees will not have to evacuate their offices here in the short-term so that we can continue to work with them to come up with a solution. And then, both city employees are involved, county people are involved, we're working with some private contractors and so forth to work up a proposal to hopefully, if the state will cooperate, this is a tough week to get anything out of the state because most everybody's not working, but that there can be a solution. You know, the bottom line is that we're all working and it's been a great outreach to come up with a solution that will allow them to open for the 60th season and then longer term with some state cooperation that will be able to repair, do the much-needed repairs and structural issues and keep the theater open for many years to come. So, this would give you all that update. We were really kind of blindsided. I think it was one of those situations where some of the staff, legal, I guess, already knew what the purpose of that meeting was, which was basically saying, the problems are so significant, we can't safely keep the theater open, we're going to have to close it, you know? And then, as we kicked around ideas, then they just said, well, we're trying to work with you on that. So, hopefully, there'll be somewhat of a public-private initiative that can come together to keep the theater open. So, we'll keep you, hopefully, informed. We know more, but right now, we don't know whether they've accepted that yet or not.
Mayor, as it relates to what you just discussed, is there some kind of dollar amount associated with what needs to be done?
Well, they, where this started was that they asked the state to come down and do an assessment because they were working to try to get some money within the Parks budget starting two years ago. And when they came down, they did inspection and they crunched the numbers of states saying that, you know, obviously, when the state does it, it's sometimes more expensive than if you do it on a private way. But the state was saying it could be as high as a million dollars or more to rebuild everything, to demo and rebuild everything and all that. We don't think it would take that much if, and that's why the judge was talking about a possibility of a lease with the county or some other entity where we could do a P3 type of initiative, which is a combination of public-private, which changes the bidding process and so forth. It could be done and you could use some in-kind contributions perhaps from some vendors and contractors and things such as that. That's the way we're hoping to go and be able to do it in a more affordable manner. But anyway, but we need to, as Johnny Warren said, the more comment that can be made and the more discussion that Frank will hear, I think the more they'll understand what a significant thing this is, that closing this would be. You know, it's been recorded, you know, the drama has gone to Japan on three occasions, taken that tour and then had been very much involved with numerous manufacturing projects here in the recruiting process, everything from, you know, singing at the groundbreakings. But I can tell you, I go back all the way to when Dr. Toyota was visiting Kentucky during the Kentucky Derby, prior to when the formal announcement for Toyota, that he was given a partial tour of my Kentucky home and entertained by the singers that year. I guess that would have been probably 84, 85, somewhere in that neighborhood, because my wife was Parks manager at that time and she actually gave the tour and I was over there that day. And so, it's hard to measure that, you know, but it definitely plays a part. The Japanese investment, a lot of that, this show and Stephen Foster's music has had a significant influence on, I think, the Japanese investment in Kentucky, which is over 100 manufacturing plants. So, I wouldn't discount that at all. So, hopefully, that will come to pass and we get this thing turned around. So, the other thing, you know, the other thing I would like to say during this comment period is just, I would like to thank all of you all for the work you all have done this year on the council and members of the staff that are here tonight, but also in general, you know, I think we have a lot to look back on and we could be proud of as a group that we've accomplished a lot this year and obviously, there's been a lot of change, but I think a lot of the change is for the better. You can't always, you know, with this pension thing hanging over us, that's forced to feed people's hands to some degree to retire and so forth, but, you know, retirements are going to happen anyway. But I just think overall that Barstown and Nelson County has been blessed this year with a lot of very positive things. And I think we as an organization, the City of Barstown is playing a key role and I think you all as a council have done a great job and I'm very appreciative of the work that you all have done and the support. I mean, you look at this coming year, you're going to have, you know, Kentucky Owl is going to start construction, Takigawa will be, I think, right now, potentially, it's an ankle that's going to be made the groundbreaking. I don't know about the formal start of work for Kentucky Owl, but, you know, Barstown Bourbon Company has been in the news now that they're adding 16 firm enters and doubling the size of their distillery and Lux Row will be in production here pretty soon. And I think, I think they're formally talking data is in April, I think, is when they're talking formally open.
Grand opening.
Yeah. So, Takigawa is $49 million investment, diversity that we have, you know, it's going to be another distillery or another auto parts. We've got a lot, a lot to be thankful for here in Barstown.
Have you heard of when the stamping plant's going to get off the ground?
Well, Thai Summit, they, I was there about a month and a half ago, they were stamping, I guess, prototype parts at that time. I don't know exactly, they may already be up and running now, I don't know that for sure, but they had one press out of the three that was in operation when I was out there about a month and a half ago. But they have some huge presses that they were, I think they were close, I think they said they would have the second one up and running by the end of this month. So, I don't know about the third one, and I'm not sure that the third one was anticipated to be running right away anyway. But, you know, a lot of good things, you know, have happened here this year and we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but that's kind of why we're, that's why we have this job to do. We've got to help plan and organize things that can help keep this growth going, but growing in an orderly manner. So, I appreciate everything you all have done this year for us. And I will say this, if you remember reading on the Takigawa, their own announcement that they put out on Facebook, one of the things they said, the reason they chose Kentucky and Barstown and Nelson County is how they were treated. I mean, they went to over 100 other cities they looked at. That was, you know, unbelievable, they looked at many cities. And one of the main reasons they chose us is how they felt when they came here, how they were received. And I can tell you, people like Jessica Filiacho and Brad Spalding and the people from Salt River that sat in on these meetings, you know, they asked a lot of questions about infrastructure and cost and so forth. And all these people worked together and, you know, promptly got them the answers they needed. And I've said this over and over again, I think, you know, Barstown and Nelson County, it just gives you a feel, comfort, I think, when you're someone in that position now, looking at other cities. And I think our city just stands out compared to others that they have choices to select from. And then, you have a cooperative effort and really strong people operating these departments that are so vital to them, you know, where they have to understand what their electric costs are going to be and what their water costs are going to be and what the wage scales are going to be and so forth. And we're fortunate that we all, you know, work together to that end. It's, you know, not a lot of turf battles. When you get into those discussions, you know, Salt River's an electric guy, well, we have our own electric company, but we're not over here, you know, stressing about that. We're handling the water and the sewer, you know, the safety and so forth. So, it's really great to see those kind of things happen and come together, but it's because we have a good collaborative effort going. And so, it's a lot for us to be thankful for and I just want to take this time to thank all of you all. And I want to thank the media, if you all showed up to these meetings like you are, you know, it's not near as exciting maybe as it was earlier in the year. You stick it out and you report our work and we appreciate that. Maybe we might not always agree every time what gets reported, but I think it's pretty accurate, day in and day out. So, thank you all for sticking it out with us each and every night that you're here with us. All right. Let's see. If we just have the cemetery deeds. We have Mark Johnson, Woodgrave, and Dean and Connie Fricks, Woodgrave, so do that by unanimous consent. As far as announcements, since you all have done such a great job and the media, you all have done such a great job, we're not going to have a meeting the first week in January, we won't have a work session. So, we don't really have a lot on our plate. If we were to have something come up, we could always call a special call maybe, but right now, we're not going to have that work session the first Tuesday in January, December, January 7th. That's not a one announcement. Anyone else have anything else?
I guess you can see the cemetery's going under.
Oh, yeah.
It looks, already looks better with it all gone. Just, has anybody driven by and seen the bushes and shrubs?
Watch it today.
It just looks so much better. It's going to, see, a lot of it's going to go back in, but then it just looks 10 times better already.
So, it will be, that's been a question a lot of people have asked, is there will be some landscaping going back after you get the steps all ground down and so forth?
There is landscaping going back in. Very tastefully done, I might add, too. There's trees going in and then there's some more evergreens that'll help primarily to block a little bit, but also to catch the debris that blows into there, keep some of that managed down. Yeah, it's going to look a whole lot better. Whole lot better.
All right. Can I have a motion for a adjournment? Council, second? Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Happy New Year.